This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. We're now weekly courthouse meeting with board supervisors. It's available by go-to meeting also and order for future reference. We have agenda in Congress, the motion approved agenda.
Aye.
Motion is our second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion passes. Approved the minutes of the September 10th meeting. Jan Stoltenbauer. Motion approved the minutes. Motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Roquel, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney, Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Motion passes. County attorney general discussion.
I don't have anything specific for you today.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Probably the burner issue for me is I have two Chevy Tahos, one that's totally off the road, transmission failure, and a second one that's probably not too far away from that. So, I've been doing some research on that. 2015 through 2019, Chevrolet put out transmissions that allegedly knew were faulty. So there's a class action suit against GM on that issue, which doesn't really help me because that'll get strung out, you know, an awful long time and those vehicles will be long gone. We've got to get Tahoe back on the road. I did send, or had conversation with Carl Chevrolet where we built them, or where we bought those things. He checked with his service department, yes, they're just getting swamped with customers calling about these issues. He said, send me the VIN numbers and the mileage that are on those Tahos and he'd start working on it for me, try and get repaired. So, that's where I'm at with it. The one Tahoe that's totally down is a K-9 handler, he's using the reserve Tahoe, which is in the same model years as the, the issues that GM has. So, that one's still going fine, but the other two aren't. So I'll keep you updated on that. I've got quite a bit of money stuck in to the one Tahoe that is totally off the road with a local mechanic trying to get us up and running, he just hasn't been able to fix it for us. So, I'll see what Carl Chevrolet tells me. Hopefully I'll have an answer this week on that. Other than that, I think, I don't know if you want to discuss the proposals on the courthouse, but it's on the agenda. Yeah, that's really all I have then for you, those vehicles. So, if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hang on here. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Department head discussion.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Conservation Board had our monthly meeting last week. The main thing, big thing on the agenda was the summit request for survey at Nelson Paradise. The board motioned to not allow the summit to go ahead and do a survey on the property at this time. They weren't interested in that, so that was kind of a quick, quick one type thing. We also quickly discussed our budget amendment, which we put in already and that sort of stuff. Land acquisition, we are closing on the property. Over here, west, east of town, it's going to be named the Historic Oaks Wildlife Area. So we did end up getting grant money for that. We also got donations from all the local PF chapters. Whitetails out of Bryceville gave money towards that as well, and then the conservation is using some of their cans for conservation and refunding to finish out to get that property closed type thing. So, no general fund tax dollars are being used on that. It's all grants, donations, that sort of stuff that we're able to come up with. We're hoping to finish up the paperwork on that this month, so then that should be open for public hunting next month type thing. So people can start utilizing that. Once we have it closed on, then we'll get the information out from there. And then the other big thing that we've got going on right now is the Mitchell Dam repairs. So we've been drawn down the reservoir since last week. We're roughly down somewhere between six and a half to seven feet right now as we speak. We've probably got another three to, excuse me, there, three to four feet to go. We should be getting there by the end of the week type thing, and then we've got to let some time to dry out, so then we can begin to repair somewhere around October, which is kind of what we got with our contractor. And it'd be three to six weeks to kind of knock that stuff out. And then we're going to need rain. I know it's not the right time to have rain, but it is the licensing we've got, so this is the timeframe we've got to do it in. We also don't want it to rain too much so the farmers can get their crops out, but yeah, we'll make precipitation to go ahead and refill the reservoir. So, we'll make it work, but it's looking good. And that's kind of where we stand on that. Any questions from there?
How about the dirt up to the county? Are we getting any of that used, used, or where?
So the conservation board, kind of what we did later over the, I think it was springtime, we opened it up. People, if people want some, they can contact us. They got to do a free will donation, but it's not for the dirt, it's only for the fill material, kind of the mixture of clay, sand, dirt type thing. They make a donation on the conservation board, which we put towards the wetland type project, and then they can take X amount. But the donations got to kind of offset what they're taking. They can't just kind of take dump truck upon dump truck and not, you know, pay five bucks. They got to kind of offset it type thing. The good dirt and that sort of stuff, the board wants to hold on to right now for future projects. I do know we have some kind of set aside for the fairgrounds. I know the fair board wanted some here. Are you still working on that project? Is that a still a go?
Yeah.
But that's where we're at. And then the board still wants to do a public day where we open it up and the public can come out and get some of the fill material type thing in the future, but we just haven't been able to get that all put together type thing. And we figured the best time to do that would be spring because that's when everybody's kind of starting to think about their landscaping projects for next year type thing. We didn't want to do it midsummer because most people have already got their projects underway and it's not the right time to start growing grass, so we figured we'd do it sometime in spring. Jim, other questions?
All right, sounds good. Thank you. County engineer update. You reached here today. Approved engagement letter for urban renewal plan amendment and cooperative agreement.
So, as you guys recall, you guys have previously approved what we've brought with the 80/20 agreement with the OCSA elevator. And so, the letter of engagement is just moving forward with those proceedings so that they can continue on your engaging with North C Whitney so that they can continue to do the work that needs to be done for the Iowa law of renewal code. So, this, the letter that you guys received, it explains their role as your legal counsel. Some of the main components to this is amending the urban renewal plan for the metropolitan urban renewal area, and then also drafting and authorizing a development plan. And then also, they will guide and direct you guys along the way as far as like appropriate resolutions, agreements, notices, and that sort of thing. They've identified their cost on this, whether fees and their expenses are serving as your legal counsel. Do you guys have any questions about the letter?
No.
Perfect. I'd like to hear that.
Motion to approve letter of engagement, some room. Second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Rachel, regards, we'll have to have a consultation meeting also, get that set up.
Yes, I have it upstairs. I already sent the letter to Barb, I believe it's, I believe it's on September 30th at 10:00 AM.
All right. If that's different to you, then it's not September 30th, 10:00 AM.
Yep. And if you want me to be a part of that, I mean, I'll be a part of it, and you wouldn't be wanting to have any responsibilities, just talk to me. Sounds good. Great.
Roquel, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney, aye. Jim.
Motion passes. Resolution setting date for public hearing on amendments to urban renewal plan for metropolitan urban renewal area, October 15th, 2024, 9:00 AM.
Do you have the dates?
Yep, so it will be October 15th at 9:00 AM.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Roquel, Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney, aye. Jim.
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion possible action on JCI proposal.
So, I gave you guys a document in regards to, that's the proposal. We got a couple of different things going on with this. One is the courts, which the sheriff has indicated that he has funding maybe to possibly pay for that. The other side of that proposal is the services building. And in the proposal, it also speaks about labor. Now, further discussion with JCI, the labor is insignificant, so I really don't think that that's going to be a part of what this cost is going to be. Talking to the courts, if you look at the documents that have got down this course, the receiver is 3905, repeater is 1490. The courts had 11 of the handheld alert buttons. That's how many they had up there. They said they need 11 back. So, and somebody should check my math, but it comes to $8,750 for all of that in regards to court side of this.
Jim, if I could comment?
Certainly.
In terms of what you have here, it says in the proposal that I got that the courthouse would need two of the links, WLR indoor systems, correct?
It, the, we would need, one of them's a receiver and then the other one is a repeater. So we would need one of each of those.
Okay, so I have, the proposal I have, it says links WLS3, which is the receiver system, correct? At 3905?
Yes, that's the, that's the receiver.
And then it shows that the courthouse would need an additional two links, WLR indoor repeaters at 1950 apiece, or excuse me, 1490 apiece? I think you have just one.
Yeah, and I, no, that, I don't know if that's just how he numbered that in there. I see what you're looking at. If you go up to the top where it's in that box, are you looking at the proposal itself?
I am, yeah.
It has quantity.
Well, I guess I see what you're saying. I took that to mean they would need two, but maybe that's just, I don't know what to.
Yeah, I think that's what he did.
Okay.
Yeah, because up top it shows quantity and just one of each.
Okay, very good. That clears it up, thank you.
Okay. So that, that's the side, that's the part of this in regards to the courts and then the sheriff's funding to possibly pay for that. Services building is another part of this proposal, and for that, they would need a receiver, and then the number of wireless buttons that they feel that they need. Talking with them, and I don't, I don't know what the board exactly wants right at this moment, but we did have some of the, Rachel, some of the elections computers that aren't being used. I don't remember how many are left that aren't being used, but.
Quite a few.
Quite a few. And so, that's an idea that they could be used rather than the buttons, but you know, they don't work for every aspect of it, so.
Actually, Megan and I talked about it, and I think we came up with a plan, and then I did have a board meeting yesterday to approve that. So, our, the public health, and then the county social services, and then that, the services building fund that Megan talked about last week, we're going to kind of split that in thirds for the receiver. So, public health will pay for a third of that, and then, and then we'll purchase the buttons that we need. I figure we'd need two for ours, for our clinic room, and then our front window. And then, and then, I don't know how many Megan will need. I think she might have said it in that email.
Yeah, she, I got the impression that she's going to use hers off of her computers, and she would just, if you needed one of those for your conference room, she would share that cost with that one. But other than that.
Yeah, we talked about conference room. We both felt that there needs to be one in there, because it's not just us using that conference room, a lot of people use that conference room, and patients get taken in there. And so, we feel, we said we would split, Megan and public health, that we would split a button to put in that conference room, to have it in there.
Okay, so your building needs how many buttons total then?
I don't know what the other side needs.
Well, she did, she said just, just the conference room is the only thing that, if you need one in the conference room, she would split that, otherwise they didn't need any.
Yeah, so we're going to get two buttons and then one for the conference room, that total of three.
Three, okay.
Did you reach out to anybody that has offices on the other side?
I did, and personally, the board may think differently of this, but I did, because you and county social services are the main people to use the building all the time, and the other people are kind of hard time people, and it just didn't, to me, it didn't seem right to ask them to have to pay for something that they're there maybe for one day a week or.
Yeah, I get that with the receiver. I just didn't know if they wanted buttons.
Oh, no, I did not, again, no, no.
Because I was going to talk to Prairie Ridge, or I didn't know if you had reached out or not, because that is a room that they would need something, but I'm sure if they put it up here, it's just whether their IT would want it, put on there.
Okay, and it's not that the, you know, this is a proposal and it's good for the 30 days, but it's not like this is a one-shot deal where we got to get the buttons now or we never get them.
Yeah.
The reason that this is kind of happening this way is, is the budget amendment that's coming up, we're kind of trying to make that happen, and that's why it's kind of a squeeze right now.
Yeah.
But if they want a button in two months from now, they're still available.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So yeah, we got it approved and figured out how we're going to pay for the receivers and then, so it sounds like three buttons that we needed, one for the conference room and then two for our side.
So for the, the, this is for the board, the account that Megan was talking about before is Department 55, and we budgeted $3,000 this year in that fund. Last year we budgeted 2,000, we upped it 1,000 from last year. 1,600 of it was used last year, so not all of it was used. The balance in that fund right now is 2730. If we use a third of that, they use a third, they take a third, county social services pays a third, that pays for the total cost of the receiver. And we have $1,400 left in that new equipment fund for that building. I know that's an awful lot of information, but I don't know how to explain it any other way. That shouldn't work. I think it would work, but I'm just.
And I did submit an amendment for our budget line to Rachel yesterday that our board approved. Could be able to vote for that, or should?
Just curious, Sheriff, you kind of mentioned how much you had in that fund, and if I remember, we were kind of in the 600, 600 or 6,500. This going to like 8750 or that's, you're okay with that?
Yeah, there's currently $5,000 budgeted in that line item. And so we just probably amend another 5,000 into it, for a total of 10, and then the 87, 8750 would come out of that, yes. That's what that money's here for, that's no problem. Okay.
That's the information. I don't know how you want to go about, we have two things. One is to approve the proposal, and the other one is to actually approve the funding. We don't have to approve county source services or the board of health's funding because that's their deal to.
Yeah, we can do the proposal and that, and do the funding later or after. We have the funding part, we just have to formality of it, I guess. We have a motion to take action on the JIC proposal. And how long does this proposal go until you say?
It was 30 days from September 3rd, so. He sent me an updated one, had the labor, and I don't know if he, anyway, yeah, we're good with the timeline so far.
I don't think the buttons will go off too much every time you order them like that?
I don't know.
If they got you, so you got back from them, so yeah.
I don't know.
Set their own price. So we have a motion to take action on the JIC proposal.
I'd make that motion.
The motion is our second. Our second. Any other discussion?
Roquel, Tom. Jim.
Aye.
Sidney, aye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. And then we'll take, discussion possible action on funding approved JIC proposal. I don't like they have the funding lined up, everybody's happy with it.
I'll make that motion again, to approve what we discussed for funding for the JCI proposal between public health.
The jury's, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Roquel, Sidney, aye. Mark.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye. Very good. Discussion on possible action on HVAC project, potential rebate?
This is the same, same line item verbiage as last week, and so there really isn't any update on the HVAC. There's still, it's still in the closeout process and fine tuning the system, so that hasn't changed. I haven't put the final retainage application in front of you yet, waiting for this to close out a little bit more first. In regards to the potential rebate, I sent you a bunch of information in regards to emails that I've been doing over the last week in regards to the two consultants that we would use. One of them sent information about how they have reached out to various people or whatever to see if it's possible, if there's any conflict with using ARPA dollars to pay for something and, and then also receiving this rebate back. And they have not been able to find any conflicts in regards to it. There's no language that says that that's a problem, and nobody has said that it's a problem. There's been other entities that have been moving forward with this, where they are or who they are, I don't know yet. So that's part of that. What else? I have a list of questions that I'm gonna, this last week I've been very busy, so I did not get more, everything done on this one that I wanted to, but I have some questions that I want to send to the superintendent of schools. I sent him an email yesterday, probably will call him today, talk with him a little bit. They're the ones that had an HVAC project for, I think it was in the neighborhood of $4 million, and they stand to get back over $700,000 out of this program. I don't think they used ARPA dollars, but I'll find that out when I talk with them. Is there a timeline on this one that has to be? What, Vic is the guy that's closing out our HVAC project and he's consulted, and he's the one that helped the schools with theirs. His comment was that it's, timeline is probably there as long as the funding is there. Once the funding is gone, then it's probably gone, but. Reading through this, I just have one conflict. It says, "It is our belief that ARPA funds are unrestricted and therefore you can take both ARPA and IRA. We have been trying to get a definite confirmation but have been unsuccessful to date." So there is no confirmation on that yet. So, how, how do we, how do we obtain that confirmation? I mean, is. I talked with Elizabeth, our auditor, not, not Rachel, the auditor, but our auditing firm, I talked with her last night, and she said that the final, her opinion was the final decision of this would be the IRS in regards to, if, you know, they're the ones that say yes, or they're the ones that say no. That was her opinion. No idea when, or I don't know when the, you know, you do it all and then, then they say no, you know, I don't, I hear you, it's kind of a gamble, because, yeah, there's costs incurred doing it, and I don't know. Is there any, I don't know, is there any way Aaron could look into it? I don't know. Are you familiar with this?
A little, but I'm, I'm, I have no problem looking into it. I'm, I'm not going to have the level of expertise that you're probably going to need. I mean, I'm happy to do what I can do, but I probably don't have the level of expertise required. You know, I know sometimes, you know, how to get IRS confirmation, you know, sometimes that won't happen until, like the IRS, if the IRS, or if somebody were to challenge it, you know, and then it ends up there. Sometimes, you know what I mean? I mean, sometimes you don't get a resolution until somebody decides to like fight something, you know? Or once in a while you get the IRS that they issue treasury regulations, but boy, their schedule on that is.
Yeah.
So, you know, yeah, I mean, I can do a little research into it. You know, I've looked, I'm happy to help, however I can, let me say that.
Kind of all the connections with other legal, you know, I don't know, I don't know. Do you think you'll be able to look into it?
Well, I can look into it.
Yeah, I can, I can try. If you look at their, I asked both of these consultants for their request for proposal, and you can, I think I sent that to you also in regards to the energy tax savers. And if you look at their typical statement of work, it, it looks like they actually do this also for clients on the front end of it, when clients are actually designing a project. So I get the impression that they're experienced at what, that this, this is what they do, and then it does show their, their rate down there, so.
I guess my two cents is that Jim wants to continue on this, this isn't quite a money savings, and at a point, I don't think he's going to spend all our money and then end up not getting it to go through. So, if you, I would like to see you continue on, and if there's a red flag or something that you don't like, you bring back and, and we just forget about it.
No, I'm not saying.
I just think that, you know, you're not going to spend all the taxpayers' money and not get anything out of it.
Look, that's a good, that's a very good point, and so I'm not trying to sell this, I'm really not. I just look at this, that the, I think the dollar amount was $491,000 that we stand to get back from this with a, he says his minimum was 8,000, so, and I didn't do the math, and that's, it should be under 20,000, but let's just say 20,000. So we have to pay $20,000 to get this 490 back. That's excellent. If that works, that's excellent. That is totally is excellent. But anywhere in there, I did not see that, from either one of these, that it's a guarantee that, generally when you have work done, HVAC project, they do some work, you pay some, you do some work, you pay some, they do some work, you pay some, and then at the end, you pay the balance. I don't know if this is something where we send you, you two guys split 20 grand, and then hopefully we get the money. And if we don't get the money, well, then we just spent $20,000 for, I don't know if that's the case, and that makes me nervous too, and I don't have an answer for that as far as how that works yet.
And I think at any point, that if you don't feel comfortable, let's just forget it, move on. just forget it, move on. You know, I mean, I, I, I trust you.
It'll be, it'll be five people deciding that, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, we can all do some research on this. You know, I ain't saying cancel, cancel, but I just think we need more, more.
I'll make a phone call today. I plan on doing that, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I just got this yesterday, you know, all the papers, so I'll do some. I think we should, maybe table it.
These are emails that I've received and I just transferred them to a Word document. That's what you got, this, that, so.
Yep, very good. I put it on hold for?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's totally definitely nothing that where you can move on. At least I don't want to move on anything, so.
We want to get more information, I guess. Okay, items of note, meetings attended?
I had an Osage City Council meeting last night. The, they talked about urban chickens, so, then it's been kind of a joke. So, there are some places in town that end up having more chickens than what they probably should have, so they're trying to get a, they are gonna have an ordinance in regards to how many animals that you can have on your premises to try to resolve that. So the final consideration of that ordinance was last night and then they also had a considerate, final consideration, assumes for an ordinance about shipping containers. There are some people that are turning shipping containers into a permanent fixture and what the city wants is that they'll allow it for, I think it's sixty days to uh, have a shipping container on your property. That's if you are remodeling your house or you're building a house or whatever, you can use it for that, but it's not a permanent thing. So those are two ordinances that they looked at. They set a hearing on the sale of uh, one of the Main Street properties, that that will be coming up. And um, crisis intervention was there asking for a thousand dollars. They approved that. That's what they asked from us also. And then they um, want to spend some money on a shelter house improvements and using ARPA dollars to do that, so. So that's pretty much it. That's all I had.
I had a landfill meeting. Um, they had a D N Rs, extraction, sorry. D N R came out and they passed them flying colors. They had water tests done as well and those passed very well. Um, they're looking into a new cell. Otherwise, um, I think we're good, recycling. Good, had good tonnage for the.
We had a conservation board meeting, but Mike went over that pretty much. And then I went to the Iowa Utilities Commission meeting in St. Ansgar about the pipeline and the I U C was there and they did an overview of what's going on and Summit was there and did an overview. They went through the permit process, overview, objections, and easements, eminent domain, public care and procedures, state of the property owners' rights, agriculture land restoration, county inspectors, damages, safety inspections. Then they opened it up, questions and answers. It was kind of lengthy there, but the landowners are in favor of the pipeline. Quite a long meeting.
We had a heartland insurance meeting. We had a regular meeting and then in the fall, we have the fall seminar. We have like, well, they had four people come in, different topics they talked about and we had these two gals come in and talk about five generations and workforce now and how employees like to be treated and how employers it's a challenge to, to uh, treat all five generations. They all have their different, the ways they like to be treated.
All that.
That was pretty interesting, but yeah. That was it?
I had none.
I got a question, Mark. Rachel put the, um, budget amendment then? Everything we just did today, you get that bug into the budget amendment, so that works?
Yep, it's already done.
Okay. And Jenny, there was an economic summit the other day. You want to just say a couple things about?
Yeah, well, it was um, uh, the economic summit in Basin City. Um, it's sponsored by First Citizens Bank. It's their second year doing it. It was a really good turnout. They probably had a little over a hundred people. Um, there was a lot of vision economy. There's a lot of larger bases that I saw, so that was nice. Um, and they also talked about, they, they had the speaker, I think his name was Steve Bench, but um, the best speaker that I've seen in a long time. Um, and he also talked about like the five generations and how differently you, like how we might perceive millennials as, they may be variety, but it's really, it's not about, you just have to treat them differently. And so it was very interesting about the different dynamics with the, including um, the veterans all the way to the generation Z.
Z.
So it was very interesting. And so I don't know who that speaker was that he went to, but.
Ally Payne and Michelle Wild. They got a consulting firm that they go around and just give talks on that subject.
Go ahead. Yep, please.
Sorry.
So I mean, all in all, I mean, I think it's just, you know, the First Citizens Bank is just trying to bring more like local awareness to economic development. I know I attend stuff regionally and stuff, and so I think they're just doing their best to really um, bring more economic awareness to everybody. So very good. Summit.
Thank you.
All right, winter management plan update?
Freezing five site, twenty-one, six, nine, one hundred and tenth street, Osage, Maplewood, pork, twenty-twenty, one hundred and ninety street, St. Ansgar, and Prairie Echo Pork, forty-one, seventy, Echo Avenue, St. Ansgar.
Okay, thank you. Public comments, any public comments?
I think I have five generations working pretty hard.
Yeah, two more different.
Eighteen to sixty-two.
Yeah.
I don't agree with some of their, but that's just me.
And I think that is common that we're like, we don't want to agree, but it's, it's reality and you're living it and you probably see it and um, maybe think about how, how nice it is just to be responsible for one employee, so instead of five generations. So maybe you weren't capable.
Yeah.
I have a comment I just thought of now, um, that, I don't know if any of you noticed, but they're really going to town on the Maplewood. They're there about every day, a lot of times Saturdays. Um, uh, I believe the city gave them an extension on whatever they had given them to the end of the year, so um, just FYI that I, what, what did we do? About one?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty that, um, again, they'll let us know when their completion is, but we'll have, we'll have that at some point, but they, there's, you know, electrical and construction, there's trucks there every day, so just FYI.
I mean, we don't have timeline on ours, right? At the end of completion.
End of completions.
Which they're looking at realistically, they're looking at not to really change again, but December. So it will be coming soon and I can reach out to her and see, you know, to make sure that she knows, know when she's ready for the, like, but I hope she'll do it.
No, and I, if I remember, I, um, Bryce was the one that came and put, you know, um, so I think it's in her hands now, so just let me make sure that she knows that.
Yeah.
We got that, so. But I, I'm really excited for it to get open and um, it looks like they're trying to open maybe the bottom floor, the retail for, because they've not been seeing a lot of work going on in there, so. See what happens.
All right, very good. Turn it nine oh nine.